Welcome to the Scottsdale Vibes Podcast. I'm your host, Alicia Haygood. I'm very excited to continue to bring you candidates for the Scottsdale Unified School District elections that are coming up. Elections are so important. Please go vote. Please, please go vote. Please go do your due diligence and learn about all the candidates. We are featuring them all on this podcast from the mayors, the city council, to SUSD. And I keep telling people, even if you don't have kids in the school district, guess what? These people affect your taxes, your house worth, and everything affects you. So it is important that you do vote for these candidates and know who you're voting for. So we're going to take a short break. When we come back, I have Gretchen Jacobs at the table with me. When it comes to protecting you, your family, and all your assets, you need to have someone that you can trust, and that's Jeremy Mueller of State Farm Insurance. Jeremy Mueller has lived in Scottsdale his whole life. How can anyone else know your needs more than someone who's been here and seen it all? Jeremy and his team are always ranked in the top percent at State Farm. He cares, he's knowledgeable, and most importantly, he's always available. Don't believe me? Give him a call at 480-515-5223, or find him at jeremymueller.com. Gretchen Jacobs is the founder and president of Arizona Governmental Affairs. She worked with the government's office, the governor's office, legislator, and state agencies on issues of policy appropriations and government marketing at the Arizona Capitol. Prior to establishing her practice in governmental affairs, Gretchen represented corporate clients in civil court as an attorney and remains an active member of the Arizona and California bar associations. Since entering the political arena in 1998, she has earned a reputation as one of the hardest working and quote unquote, "most effective lobbyists" in Arizona, as noted in numerous publications. So Gretchen, thank you so much for joining me today. I'm excited to have you at the table. Let's just start with, what are you going to do to help fix the enrollment issues here at SUSD?
Thank you. That's one of the reasons that I'm running. I'm very, very interested in learning why people are not choosing some of the Scottsdale schools that are fantastic. And because it's hard. I think most people want their children to, and the children want to be able to ride their bikes to school and know the kids in the neighborhood, and also not have to pay anything to go to school. So that is a major issue. Also, I want to, I need to look at what the demographics are. What's happening? Do we have an aging community? Is some of this just, was this predictable? Was this something we should have been planning for? So, learning about why people are leaving, looking at the demographics and the trends that are coming, so we can better predict, those are things that I want to do.
That kind of goes along with my next question is teachers' retention is also a problem to go along with student enrollment. So recruitment, mentorship, working with local universities and schools around the state, what are you going to do to help retain teachers here in SUSD?
I think that the number one issue for schools, the most important, not issue, but component of a school, is the teachers. And so having good teachers is the highest priority, I think, for the board. So knocking on doors, I've met a lot of people when I was trying to get signature petitions to get on the ballot, and I've learned a lot. I still have much more to learn. But one of the things that I learned was that the teachers have said that a lot of their 20% pay increase has gone to the cost of health insurance and paying for their families. And so they, in some cases, they say it's a net loss, that they're making less now than they did before they got the 20% increase because of the cost of the health insurance increases. And so I feel that we need to offset that. We need to really look into the budget and find out where are some areas that we can move some money, repurpose the money to invest in the teachers so that they can take home more of their pay. So that's a high priority for me. I also learned that there were a lot of teacher, I talked to a science teacher, which I know they're especially hard to find. And she said that she worked at the district for 10 years and then took a few years off with the birth of her children, and then returned, and she lost all of her seniority. So she is now, when she returned, they said, you know, they gave her first year pay, and she's starting all over. And so she said she's been at the school district for 15 years, and she had her little, I guess like a little coin or something that said, "congratulations on five years," when it's really been 15. And she said she just felt so insulted by it. And when you, I think that really doesn't prioritize the teachers. It doesn't show them how important they are, especially teachers with experience. And so when they're coming back, I don't think we should incentivize them to be able to look anywhere. We should say, hey, you've got a lot of seniority at the school district. You're part of our family. Let's keep you. So that's something I also want to look at, trying to fix for the existing teachers that are going through that, and then teachers that want to have some flexibility to take some time to be with their children.
I didn't know that. Why are our graduation rates so high, but our test scores are so low? We're below the national average. We've talked about how COVID affected these. We're gone on four and five years now since that. How are we going to make those an evil-loving, level place?
You know, as someone who was not the best student in every category, I was pretty good in English, but not very good in math. And what I found was more time and attention. So it's just a matter of, some people need some additional assistance, whether it be in reading, math, science. And so a lot of, I think it's a high priority for me to have reading specialists, math specialists, basically getting additional time and attention to students that need it, especially when you look at math. If you get behind, it's really, really hard. And so I want to make sure that we, that we're losing a lot of, or the priority in the budget hasn't been retaining some of the reading and math specialists. And so to me, that's the, one of the highest priorities I have. I have a real, one of the reasons that I want to run is, or what I want to focus on when I'm in, on the board, is students who are, need some extra support, whether that be someone who's gifted, believe it or not. Sometimes, you know, gifted have other things that they need support with, and/or they have dyslexia. It's the kids that are struggling that have so much potential, but they just need the right support. And so that's kind of my area that I'm really interested in.
Gretchen, you kind of brought this up with your first question about student enrollment, but talking about how our demographics and how everything is zoned out and broken up for, you know, enrollment purposes. So how would you work to make our schools more of an evil-level playing field, to make all schools in SUSD the best that they can be?
I think a lot of it is parent involvement, which as a working mom, I understand that's really hard, but it makes a big difference. So making it easier for, making it, doing what we can to help involve student parents is really, really important to me. And then I remember when my daughters were little, I felt like they kept getting all these notes, and I felt like I was almost like, that they were bringing home, if I didn't check their backpack, I just went to bed, I was failing the test. And I was, it just is, I think it's very hard to get everything coordinated. So making sure that everything's, helping to work with the parents to coordinate what's the best way to communicate with them. And then also, looking at the schools where, there's a couple of schools I constantly hear about, this is just from knocking on doors and going to events, that Cheyenne is just a really great school in the school district. And so let's look at what's, and their scores are really high, which is, some of it is parent involvement, but some of it is a different curriculum, some of it is the way that they're teaching. I'd like to really dive into that and see if we can replicate that other places.
What is something the current school board is doing right that you would like to continue working on?
I do think that they empower their, the superintendent, the leadership. I think they really do empower and trust leadership. I think that's important, that you have a board that trusts the leadership and has a collaborative relationship with the leadership.
And you continue working on that?
Yes, that's a high priority. We need to, I think a functional board and a functional governance is when there is a collaborative relationship and not a distrusting relationship. I think that's really important. And I think the majority of the board right now has that trusting relationship.
How are you going to change the climate within the board? Because that is something that many community members feel. When you go to these SUSD board meetings, it can be hot and tempered. And so how would you like to come in and change the climate within the SUSD board?
I do think that regardless of who is elected, I think the dynamics of these existing personalities do not work well together. And so there will be a change. I would say, so I worked down at the Capitol as a government affairs attorney or lobbyist. And so people, I would say, most days say, you know, how do you work down there? That's just so rough. I had no idea how not rough it is compared to the school board.
It's not funny, but it's very true.
And it's, I think that was one of the most shocking things I've ever seen. My favorite moments at the Capitol have been when, especially in the appropriations committee, where that's, the budget is your priorities. And so by the time the budget comes up, the majority and the governor usually have worked out a deal. And so people who are raising issues, which are often valid, because you can't get everything in that's good in the budget, it's just how it works out. So when people are bringing up issues, it's very easy to kind of bat them down and say, well, yes, of course, we should do all of that, but we can't. We have, we have a budget, and so we had to prioritize this and be somewhat dismissive. My favorite moments at the Capitol have been when the minority party has kept arguing, kept making points where, when I was first in there, I thought, why are they even arguing? It's over. And then I've been in, I've watched in hearings and on the floor where the minority party brings up things that people did not think about. And everybody in the room seems to realize at the same time, there's a really important point being made here. We need to make a change. And it is so uplifting, and it shows why having a diversity of opinion is important. And so I, naively, when I went to the, my, started going to the school board meetings, I thought that sometimes when you have opposing points of view, you can get the best policy. So I was thinking there would be more of a give and take. But it's, I think that I've started watching the board meetings at the end, where I don't know how it got so bad, but it is, there is no give and take. There is complete distrust. And I think that just having a new group of people on the board, a different, is going to make it, whatever's happened will be gone. And so we'll have new people. I've met all the candidates who are running, and they all seem like reasonable people who, we, there should be a better dynamic no matter what. But then that's obviously a high priority of mine to get along better, mainly because, not just because conflict is no fun and it's grueling, but because better policy comes from listening to other people whose opinions and perspectives are different from yours, and you can, better things come from it. So I'm very interested in a very, a much more positive, I think everybody is, in a much more positive setting.
I hope everybody is. I agree with you on that. Gretchen, this is an unpaid, pretty much full-time position. What are you going to do, and you've kind of mentioned this when you were knocking on doors, but what are you going to do to be more active in the community and get the people to start trusting the board as a whole?
So I'm, I like people in general. And I think one of the reasons I've been able to stay at the Capitol for so long with so much conflict and contentious matters being discussed is, I'm very interested in other perspectives. I really like hearing from people. I don't think I know it all. I know I have a lot to learn. I have principles, but I, especially when it comes to school finance, there is so much to know and learn about. So I'm very receptive to, you know, anyone who has reached out to me. I've tried to respond. Sometimes it's a few days.
It's life.
One of the, one of the reasons that it's been, is that when I signed up, I wasn't, I wasn't really set to sign up. I, so I had an email address, which I tried to have forwarded, and so some emails didn't come through. And so anyway, so yeah, I have like three emails for the campaign. So sometimes I'm not getting them all. And when I find them later, you know, a few days later, I'm always horrified. But I, when I have one email address and things are less of like how the campaign started, I'm very responsive. I like people. I like hearing from people. And so I don't think that'll be an issue.
I want to end on a positive note. So I want to ask you, Gretchen, what is your favorite Scottsdale thing about the Scottsdale Unified School District? What's your favorite thing about the SUSD, I guess you could say?
I have to say, I, well, obviously the teachers. My children had amazing teachers. One of my, actually, both my daughters went to, it was Arcadia Learning Center, now it's Echo Canyon. And I, they had the best experience there. They, and there was a teacher, Mrs. Missile, who had been applying for grants. And if you go on that campus, it's probably the most beautiful campus ever. I mean, it's pretty, I went to the University of Southern California for undergrad, and I remember when I went there, I thought, this is paradise. I can't believe a place like this exists. That's how I felt when I would walk into to the Echo Canyon or Arcadia. Just the beauty of it, and then the warmth of the teachers. So yes, those are, I guess I have two things that I really appreciated.
We have about 90 seconds left just over. So why should we vote for Gretchen Jacobs for SUSD?
I'm hoping to be a bridge, because I'm very interested in other people's perspectives. And I've seen government run well. And so I'm hopeful that the background that I have, that I've become very knowledgeable about a lot of the issues at the government, how to get things done, how to work with people. I think that I'll be a good bridge. I'm not, I'm not extreme, is the word, I guess, of the day. I'm very interested in getting it right. And so I think that should go a long way.
Well, you can find out more about Gretchen and her points that she is running on, and more information about her at jacobsforSUSD. That's J-A-C-O-B-S-F-O-R-S-U-S-D.com. Again, the description's right in the link of this episode, as well as our YouTube channel, where you can go watch this video episode as well. Thank you so much, Gretchen, for joining us. Best of luck to you at this election, and thank you for taking the time to care about our children.
Thank you.
Stay tuned, we'll be right back. Drew Hassler is a lifelong resident of the Arcadia-Scottsdale area. He's also an SUSD graduate, and now his two current, well, current and only kids, I should say, are also currently attending SUSD schools as well. He's a small business owner, and he's running and believes that we should be putting our students first when it comes to here in school. So Drew, thank you for being at the table with me today. Let's start with, what are your ideas and what are you going to do to fix the enrollment issues here in SUSD?
Well, you know, I think when you start to look at the big picture, people are, they have more choices. So if you have a public school system that isn't providing the things that maybe a charter school or a private school can, you've got to kind of look at retooling and curriculum, you know, things that those other places offer, you're going to have to kind of adapt. We can't just blame the other options for the problems in public schools. People are making those choices for a reason. And, you know, I think from the top down, us as school board members have to look at the superintendent as kind of your general manager. And if there's issues from him down, then you have to start asking the questions, you know, do we need somebody else? Or is this just a curriculum thing? Or can we shift gears? Because at the end of the day, you know, 54% of the kids that live in Scottsdale go to public schools. The other 46% go somewhere else. There's other options. So I think we can do a better job.
Some of that goes along with teacher's retention. That's been an issue. So between recruitment, mentorship, working with our local universities in the state, how would you go along with helping retain teachers here at SUSD?
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, so I've never held public office or worked in a government position, you know, but when I look at, you know, the things that people look for when they go out to find a job, because we got to remember, the teachers also need to be paid. They need to have healthcare. You know, they need to be able to buy groceries and get to work and live somewhere. So with our current staff, they've been hit really hard with a big uptick in insurance costs. So one of the things I'd like to do is, you know, look at some of the insurance programs that we're currently on, and see if we can tool them to save the teacher, you know, a couple hundred bucks a month. We have a wonderful teacher that lives, you know, in our neighborhood, and her insurance costs, she's a single mom, is $1,800 a month on a teacher's salary. You know, she's been doing it a little while, but she doesn't make, you know, high six figures. That's a lot of money. That's half of her take home. So current teachers, you know, try to look at the things that will save them money, and possibly even bonus out, you know, people for doing good work. I know that's not always a popular opinion, but, you know, if we're looking to strive for excellence with students, we need good teachers. And for those teachers that are looking for jobs, I think you offer a more competitive salary, better health system, you know, and continued education that makes sense. So, you know, if you can look at a public school system, and if somebody wants to take extra classes and go towards maybe a master or a doctorate, you know, we want that. That's what you want in your schools. So I think it's a kind of a blend of everything. I, you know, I know that teacher salary is a big deal, but with the district's current budget, we can afford to pay teachers. We're spending money on things that maybe we should reallocate. You know, it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense, at least in my mind. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to ask parents and taxpayers and people that live in the community every two or four years for another raise for teachers, because the district can't budget correctly.
Our graduation rates are high, but our test scores are low. So how can we, and our test scores are some below the national average. How can we get these on par to be our test scores are equaling our graduation rates?
So we talked, I mean, talked a little bit about the curriculum and the other options in the area. In Phoenix alone, for instance, the basis system is doing really well nationally. So I, you know, I don't, do I think that a public school system can run exactly like a private business or a charter school? Probably not, but we can try. And we can, you know, we can look at the curriculum. We can look at things that, maybe within our own school district, Cheyenne Elementary is a good example. They're doing really well. My kids go to Tavon, which is maybe three miles south, and it's vastly different as far as test scores. Also, if we have 50 or 60% proficiency for kids graduating into the next grade or graduating high school, that's, that doesn't cut it. So we've got to maybe start to have some accountability for teachers, students, the district itself, obviously, but also parents, so that parents can be involved in the kids' lives. And they know that homework's coming home. They know that they have to learn this stuff. Because, you know, I think, what was it, last year's 11th graders were 25% proficient in science. 25. That's in 11th grade. That's not doable. Math was a little bit better, maybe 48% or, you know, and then reading and writing, or ELA, if you're at 60% and you're celebrating that, that's not right.
This kind of question kind of continues on from what you've been saying, but how would you work to make our schools more of a love, even level playing field? Because you kind of mentioned Cheyenne, I put the two schools together. Cheyenne and Tavon, they're different, and we still have schools in South Scottsdale as well. So how do we work to make our schools more of a level playing field that we don't want our kids always to go to the charter or private schools in that sense?
Well, you know, I think that, as we've kind of been talking, the theme is allocating the money correctly and using what's in the budget correctly. And using that for curriculum that makes sense, using that for maybe some things that, as a, as a whole, the community can look at and go, okay, that's, that's the way we should be, we should be doing it, not just one or two schools. So one of the things they do at Cheyenne is they're a traditional school, which more like you and I went to school, reading arithmetic. You know, we need to, before we can start worrying about a lot of the other issues in today's society, we have to make sure these kids can read about it, that, you know, that they can comprehend what they're reading, do the math, do the science. And then we can start maybe at an older age, you know, worrying about that other stuff. So I think as far as the equity or equitable, if you're, if you're putting out a good curriculum and you have good teachers, I think it takes care of itself.
I know you've attended some school board meetings this year. So what is something that the current board is doing right that you would like to continue working on?
Well, not much. And there's three seats open, and that's, you know, that's why Jeannie and Gretchen and I are running. But, you know, I think if we can work together, whatever the makeup is, and work with the, some of the people that are at the district currently, I guess if I were going to give praise to them in any way, it would be that, you know, they can reasonably govern, but the things they're putting in place aren't correct. So, you know, it's, it's tough to say they're doing anything right. You know, I know that's probably not the answer you or your listeners want to hear, but that's the one I got.
We're here to talk. I want open and honest answers. These school board meetings can get heated. They've made national news. They always make local news. So what are you going to do to change the climate within the board to kind of go back to what your goal was for the previous answer and listen to each other and work together?
So I think one of the problems that parents have is that we feel like we're at odds with the school board, with the school district, with the administration on site, with teachers. And that's, that can't be the way. In order to raise good kids that grow up to be good people, we need to work together. So in a lot of the things that we've already maybe mentioned, you know, from a, from a school district standpoint, being transparent with the parents and the taxpayers, everybody in the community about what's going on. You know, the, in my mind, there should be no behind closed doors. We're a, the school board is an intermediary between the public and the superintendent to make sure that tax dollars and the kids are being raised right. So if we can kind of change the culture into a, you know, if you're a parent, you can come in, you come in with a smile, and I'm an administrator or somebody in the district that we're happy to see. We want to answer your questions, because everything's out in the open.
This is an unpaid, pretty much full-time position at some point, even though they say it's not. What are you going to do to continue to be active in the community and the board to bring the board and the community together?
So I've been here my whole life. I, you know, got a lot of good friends, know a lot of families, work in the neighborhood, so, or the district. I think being in unpaid position, that's not why I'm here. You know, I'm here because I've got a six and an eight-year-old, and I, all their little buddies and friends, and everybody that goes to school. And you see the test scores, like we mentioned. So, you know, I'm here because things need to change. And whatever time it takes, that's the time I'm going to give it. So.
What is your favorite thing about Scottsdale Unified School District?
Probably that as big as Scottsdale is, and it kind of, you know, reaches into Phoenix here and there, you know, Paradise Valley. But it's, the schools still feel like a little community, a little small town, wherever you are. So if you're in the Desert Mountain District, the Arcadia District, the Coronado District, those still feel like neighborhoods, but we're in a city of 5 million people, you know, greater Phoenix metro. So I grew up here. I've got a lot of friends that are still here, or moved away and came back because they missed that. And I hope we don't ever lose that. And I think that's something that has grown from not only the, you know, the town of Scottsdale, but the schools within it. So.
Last question, we have a few minutes left, and you can take the remaining time to yourself. Why should we vote for Drew Hassler, for Scottsdale Unified School District Board Member?
Look, I'm not here because I want things to stay the same. I'm here because things need to change. The test scores are down, enrollment's down. I think the overall feeling about public schools is down. So if you want things to stay the same and continue on the path, you should probably vote for the other three guys. That's fine. Or two guys and a lady. That's fine. You know, everybody's got to vote. But if you do want to see change, that's why, that's why I'm running. And that's why I'm running alongside with Jeannie and Gretchen, because we have the same values. We want to see the same thing. You know, we differ, we're individuals, but we see the problems and we think that we can do better. So, you know, I don't really have anything other than what I can bring to the table and the drive that I can, I can, I can throw in. And look, there's, it's a big district, and not many people throw their hat in the ring to do this. If you asked me 10 years ago what I'd be doing, it wouldn't be running the school board. You know what I mean? But, but it's something that we need to work on. And that's why I'm here. So.
Two things I got out of that was, please go vote. It's very important. You do have a say in Drew, and all the candidates have said that. It is your voice. You live here. Whether you have kids in the school district or not, this, this position affects you and all of us here. So please take it very seriously. So please take it very seriously. Thank you, Drew, for doing what you do, all the candidates running, best of luck. We have gotten some mail-out ballots already in. Go, I'm a voter in person, that's my favorite thing to do. In the meantime, do your due diligence, go read. You can go visit more and learn more about Drew at hasslerforstrongschools.com. That's H A S S L E R, the number for strongschools.com. As always, just click on the description of this episode and it'll take you, the link will take you right there. Thank you, Drew, so much for being here today.
Thanks for having me. Thanks to all your listeners and viewers, I appreciate it.
Jeannie Beasley and her husband raised their three kids in the Scottsdale School District. Jeannie was a volunteer during her kids' time in the district and still works with the district's audit, audit committee and attends the school board meetings. Her skillset as a litigation paralegal can bring value to the SUSD board with her critical thinking skills, details of problem solving, and her ability to work with others. To find out more about Beasley after this interview, please go to BeasleyForSUSD. That's B E A S L E Y F O R S U S D. Again, as everything else, website is in the description of this episode, just click on it and it'll take you right there. So thank you for being with us today. Let's just start with the first question we've asked everyone. What are you going to do to fix the enrollment issues here in SUSD?
Oh, good question. So, look, parents have a choice. And there's, there's parochial, there's charter schools, there's homeschooling. And SUSD, like every other school district, needs to put the best product they can so parents can make a choice. And there's always gonna be people that are gonna go to private school, there's always gonna be, you know, that's fine. But my goal is to have all of those on the same playing field and let parents have a choice of which one, you know, they want to send their kids to. I think once you do that and you spend the dollars correctly and your priority is academic achievement in the school district, parents will eventually see that and have, you know, another choice or more choices on how they choose to educate their kids.
Excellent. To go along with enrollment issues, one thing that we have seen here in the school district is teacher retention rates. So when it comes to recruitment, mentorship, working with the local universities here in our state, how do we get teachers to stay here working in our district?
So a couple of things, I mean, you certainly always want competitive pay. I mean, we all are out working for competitive pay. So we want to make sure that, you know, we hire and retain good teachers. And that's just part of the ongoing discussion of competitive pay with other districts. I've talked to several teachers since I've been running and the reoccurring theme, there's a lot of discipline problems with students. And some have unfortunately left the school district because of that. So again, a, a big priority is to get a handle on what, what is going on? Why is there a discipline problem? What's the chain of command? Why is it not being taken care of? And why are teachers deciding to leave because of that? Look, you cannot have a really good school district and a really good product for the community without solid teachers, period. I mean, it, there's just, hands down, that's your number one priority.
Our graduation rates, they are very high, go SUSD, but our test scores are low. So what are we going to do with, to get our test scores above the national average and get those graduation rates and the test scores to be more on an even playing level?
So, yeah, that is seem kind of strange when you have such a high graduation rate opposed to the test scores. So you have, it's just a, it's a long-term project, really. You've got a lot of young kids that are using a lot of technology. I'd like to see them do a little more pen and paper or pencil and paper to be more hands-on instead of, you know, constantly using the phone or a laptop or something like that. I think kids have a lot of distractions and perhaps if you eliminate that, you know, something like that, that you can get test scores up. Again, when I go out and speak to the public, as I have many times over the last several months, my biggest issue is academic achievement. And if you make that a priority, then again, you spend the dollars correctly, you make the students and staff safe on those campuses, excuse me, and you get rid of the distractions. And again, if that's your priority, keep good teachers, pay them properly, get the discipline out of the schools. And again, I keep hounding on, you know, academic achievement as the priority. Over time, I would, can't imagine why those test scores wouldn't go up. I just would be shocked if that wasn't the case.
You talked about this again in your first answer about making freedom of choice for our families to choose their school. So how would you make our schools more of an even level playing field to make all of our schools desirable to attend?
Okay. So I have been attending the board meetings for the last couple of years. And what I think is really important is for the public to see the five board members having priorities such as academic excellence, safety and security, as I mentioned, on the campuses, fiscal responsibility. And I, I do truly believe if you have five solid board members that can come together and have similar agendas that, that the community will see that and will eventually put public school on the playing field as the other options that they have.
What is something that the current SUSD board is doing right and that you would continue to work on?
Oh, first and foremost, those five individuals almost always do the right thing by voting. It's almost always five, you know, to zero about supporting teachers and staff, whether it's teacher pay or they, they need, whatever they need to be successful. It's very, very rare when I see any unusual discussion about a problem with voting unanimously on that. And again, sitting in the back of the room for so long that I have, that's very encouraging to see the, the five members continue to do that.
As someone who does attend these board meetings, you have seen how heated that these board meetings could get. So how are you going to come in to change the climate within the board?
So what I'd like to do, I get asked the question a lot, what, what are you gonna do day one? And kind of a simple answer, at least to me, you get the five people together. Obviously, you're gonna have two board members that are gonna remain on the board. And you get them together and you decide what is your agenda? What is the agenda as the five people? Now, we may have differences about what's one and what's two and whatever, but all people can have common ground. I've lived long enough to figure that one out. So you could definitely, again, find common ground and, you know, work together to set that agenda and let the superintendent know what it is and, you know, drive it through the school system.
One of the things and all of, every candidate has done this, you've gone out in the community, you've knocked on doors, you've gotten your name, you know, because you have to do a lot of work before we get to this point, you and I are sitting here. This is an unpaid, full-time position. So Jeannie, what are you going to do to be more active in the community while working with the board to bring everything together?
So even now, as you mentioned, I'm on the audit committee. And let me just explain to you what that is. So that's a five-member committee. There's actually a sitting board member on there now, as well as a previous board member, myself and two others. And we're basically the liaison between the city auditor and the school district. And we have a budget and we work on different audits like HR, you know, human resources. We're doing one in transportation, potentially one in insurance. So I will continue to do that. I've done that for well over a year now. If I am elected and get on that board, I'm so excited to get out to the schools, meeting people, the staff, the students, administrators, seeing what's important to them, what their priorities are, and, and going back to the other board members to, you know, what can we do to make, you know, things happen, to make it a positive place? I love talking to people. I can, I come from a very large family, so that's helped with collecting signatures and door knocking. And I, you know, continue to do that and I'm just very excited to be able to get out in the community, in the school district and, you know, get people's thoughts. What, what, what do you think? I would love to hear what anyone has to say to make things better. Everyone has, should be heard and people all have good suggestions. So looking forward to hearing them.
Very nice. What is your favorite thing about Scottsdale Unified School District?
Again, I just think that the students, I mean, just having my own children and seeing the faces of kids, I just, and the world that they're gonna go into and how exciting it is for them to learn new things and all the, you know, do, what do you want to do for a living? Where do you want to live? All those kinds of things. And just watching kids grow like my own children did and giving them the best education and safe environment for them to do that in.
Last question, we have about five minutes left just under. Why should we vote for Jeannie Beasley for Scottsdale Unified School District Board?
So I have been in the community for a few decades now. I live in the same neighborhood as I did when my kids went to school. And I'm not planning on going anywhere. And I did a lot of volunteer work when they were in the school district. And, you know, I went about my life and, but then I started, you know, seeing and hearing some things about the school district and I thought, you know, and I'm gonna check it out for myself. And I'm gonna go to a board meeting. I never did that before, never did that when my kids were in the school district. And when you do that, you see who the people are, who the administrators are, where the money comes from, how it's being spent, you know, who the teachers are. And you, I don't know a lot of these people, I certainly know their names. I've met a lot of them. They seem like really great people. And, you know, it's just, I just, then I got on the audit committee. I've been asked to speak because I've been so involved about what is going on with the school, school district, just from a community member taxpayer position. And I just think, again, with my, as you mentioned, my, my skills, being at the same law firm for 20 years, just critical thinking, being overseeing large litigation matters. We do, we have budgeting issues, personnel issues, all kinds of things. And I just really think that the community would really be well-served, having me as a board member, and I look forward to it.
Well, best of luck to you in the upcoming election. Please go vote. This is a very important election. They all are important, but this is a huge one with everything on it. So please do your due diligence. Go watch this YouTube episode if you haven't. Again, Beasley for SUSD. Thank you, Jeannie Beasley, for coming today and best of luck in the future.
Thank you so much. It was an absolute pleasure.
Stay tuned, we'll have the calendar events when we come back. Buying a home can be scary and sometimes frustrating, but all of that can go away with the right realtor. And that's where Sean Shackleton with the Shackleton Group is here for you. Sean has over 25 years' experience in real estate. She's here to get you what you want and won't settle for less. She's experienced, knowledgeable, and understands this market, which these days is always changing. Take the stress out of your next home purchase by calling Sean at 480-734-7277. You can also find her at theshackletongroup.com. This weekend, it is officially here. The Polo Party at Westworld is sure to be a great day. I'm gonna be out there judging the fashion couture show that we heard from Ivan Lugari. So go ahead and come out there and see me. I look forward to seeing all your dressed-up puppies. Another puppy event that is happening is Desert Dog Days, Desert Dog Police Canine Trials, I should call it. It's happening at Westworld, October 26th and 27th. This is, will be an awesome opportunity for you to come out, see these canine dogs talents, because they're gonna be competing each, with each other, which will be really cute. And you also get to see up close and personal with some of the squad cars and meet our officers. So thank you for all that you do. And I don't know if you knew this, but our canines are actually police officers as well. So if anything happens to them in the line of duty, they get the same treatment and respect as our officers do, which I think is amazing. All right, for all you spooky fans out there, the Black Lagoon Spooky Pop-Up is happening. There's only a couple weeks left to check out this spectacular pop-up at the Speakeasy Sunny's Lounge. So only about a dozen in the whole country are happening. Phoenix is one of the locations, so go be sure to check it out. Don't forget to see all of the events listed for a more in-depth and Scottsdale city lifestyle. But in the meantime, Scottsdale, have a great week, keep vibing, and I'll see you around town.